Today is September 20, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And this is a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all join us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The next item is approval of minutes. You should have the minutes from the September 8th meeting in your packets.
I have the motion that we approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting with one small correction. Page 4 under meeting notes, paving should identify the engineer Carl Asomovik. Up the first line there. And I think Carl was over the page.
It did. All right, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All right, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Erica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is present to speak. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record, and we ask that you limit yourself to two minutes. We do have folks here in the room and online, so you can use the raise hand feature online. I'm going to start with folks in the room to try to keep this a little bit structured since we can't all see each other. So is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone on the call who would like to speak? If so, you do have the ability to unmute yourself, and I ask you to identify yourself for the record. Anyone present to speak? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Correspondence. We did receive three letters that we will include in our minutes and I will read for the record. The first from Sarah Baker. It was sent to Herb Eriko, Chair of Wellington Board of Education, and sent to our office. Dear Mr. Eriko, In the Board of Education bylaws, it states that you will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulations, and court orders pertaining to public schools. The vote proposed at the September 14th Board of Education meeting is in clear violation of the Federal Equal Access Act. Additionally, Connecticut state law expressly forbids local boards of education from discriminating based on gender, identity, or sexual orientation, among other characteristics. I am dismayed that the board would be debating in any way actions that are illegal, discriminatory, and harmful to our children. I believe in open debate and civil discourse. People have a right to opinions and to express those opinions. However, this is not an unfettered right, and speech is not benign. One must exercise care and judgment. This is especially true for our community leaders and elected officials. Allowing the board to entertain derogatory and negative speech towards a protected class of individuals or any group undermines the integrity of this board and its work in this town. Indeed, the Board of Education is also an employer. You employ gay people. You must consider how conversations at board meetings contribute to a hostile work environment for our teachers and staff, and how a vote could have led to violations of their rights under federal and state employment laws. I truly appreciate the time and dedication you have consistently demonstrated to our children and to our education system, and value your experience in this sector. As the chair, I hope that you can guide the board towards speaking and acting with clarity and purpose and issuing further unproductive conversations. Sincerely, Sarah Baker. Dear Board of Selectmen, I watched the 9/14/21 Board of Education meeting. It was not just disgusted by the words of Ms. Testa, but outraged that she would use her position as a Board of Education member to attempt to dismantle a club that encourages inclusion. This was a clear abuse of power and a violation of the mission of Wellington Public Schools, and the Wellington Board of Education is tasked with upholding. Wellington Public Schools, through a partnership with students, parents, staff, and the community, will provide exceptional instruction in a positive and engaging environment of inclusion where students achieve their maximum potential. What these actions have shown us is that unfortunately, there is at least one elected official in Wellington pushing an agenda of hate and bigotry. There is no place for this in our community and particularly in town government. Therefore, I am writing to request that the Board of Selectmen formally condemn her actions and all forms of hate in our community and join the voices calling for her resignation. Sincerely, Christina Milos, 46 Hall Hill Road, Wellington. Dear First Selectman Waschinsky, As I am sure you are aware, last week's Board of Education meeting left many parents and townspeople reeling in the wake of Board of Education member Elena Testa's statements against the HMS GSA Club. I feel that Ms. Testa made it clear that in her elected position, she will only represent those members of the student body who are in line with her religious beliefs. I am contacting you today to call on the Wellington Board of Selectmen to stand united against any and all forms of exclusion and discrimination in the town of Wellington. Furthermore, I ask this governing body to remind the Wellington Board of Education of their non-discrimination statement. The Wellington School District is committed to a policy of equal opportunity, affirmative action for all qualified persons. The Wellington School District does not discriminate in any employment practice, education program, or educational activity on the basis of race, color, religious creed, sex, age, national origin, ancestry, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, disability, including but not limited to intellectual disability, past or present history of mental disorder, physical disability, or learning disability, genetic information, or any other basis prohibited by Connecticut, state, and/or federal non-discrimination laws. There is no room for the clear and outright discrimination that Ms. Testa is perpetuating. Thank you for your time and attention to this crucial matter. Shannon Borbul. That's all I have under correspondence.
I'm a bit upset here. When I got my first copy of the proposed agenda for this week, it had to discuss this on the agenda. And then the official agenda came out, and it was not on there, which is okay. But now what you've done is you've managed to read three letters into the minutes with no opportunity to discuss. Should we discuss this?
Would you, are you proposing? I'm reading into the record correspondence that were sent to this office. John, if you would like to have a discussion about it.
When is the last?
If you would like to have a discussion about the matter, you can make a motion to add the item to the agenda. The item is not on the agenda, nor was it warned on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda, I understand that. And people who might be interested, or maybe not here tonight because it wasn't on the agenda.
I did not put it as a topic. I'm merely reading into the record, letters on this matter that were sent to our office.
I'm not very happy with these.
You're not happy with the minutes? You're not happy with the letters?
I'm not happy with the letters.
And the topic of the letters?
Being.
So the item we're on is correspondence. If you would like to have a discussion about an item added to the agenda, you're certainly welcome to make that motion.
I'm not ready to discuss it tonight.
Move on to First Selectmen Status Report. The Steve Grant. We don't have anything new since our last meeting. We're still waiting to hear from DPH, who has taken over this particular item. The school building committee met and discussed the funds they've asked for, for consultants. Once again, and that was Wednesday night. Once again, they moved the item to the Board of Finance, and that will be addressed later on the agenda. We have no new update on the Lot Set Project. Mike Demato was working with CROG, and DOT sending comments back to them for this. ARPA, there was a meeting this afternoon to discuss funding from the Ad-Hoc Committee. We discussed requests that had come from town, from town hall department heads, which we started. And then we discussed creating a survey to get input for residents, and we plan to meet again in a month. Union negotiations. As you both know, we don't have a new date as of yet. So nothing new there. We're still waiting to hear back from the union. As far as COVID goes, we had a slight increase in fully vaccinated members of Wellington. We're now 56.6% fully vaccinated, and that represents 15 new fully vaccinated individuals. We are seeing an increase in COVID. Since our last meeting on September 8th, we have had 15 new positive cases. And so that's less than our normal two-week timeframe. So I will once again encourage folks to be conscientious. If you're in town buildings, you are required to wear a mask and consider being vaccinated. On our staffing needs. Today, the land use assistant, Assistant Land Use Agent position, they had their first interviews this afternoon. So we look forward to seeing how that goes from here. And Alan Humphrey is currently acting as interim Parks and Rec Director while we continue. Questions or comments? Public Works. I'll let Troy speak to his report since he's here with us.
We finished grading the Hoppa Farms. We put some stone swells in there to rip wrap around the plate. Chips and brush. We're still paving edges around town. Roadside mowing is still going on during rainy.
Troy, can I ask you to pause? Kelsey, did that start recording?
Recording in progress.
Oh, boy.
I did record it, I recorded though.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Troy, continue.
We've been back on curbs. Normally, we whack around the garage, the transfer station. We've been patching several holes around town. Changed the trash up there at Riverwood Park, and we installed a new curb on Jared's stories.
Anything for Troy? New business. Item one is awarding the snow plowing contract. It's a two-year bid for 2021 through 2023. So you can see, Kelsey has put together the bids that we received. We only, we rely on two contractors for our plowing. We received one bid. So you have one bid in your packet from Larry Kutschfeld to provide one truck and an hourly rate of $155 an hour. So that is an increase over the last contract, but still just one. So Troy had recommended the bid be awarded to Larry Kutschfeld. So I will make a motion to approve the plowing contract for 2021 through 2023 for one truck to Larry Kutschfeld at $155 an hour. Second, discussion. I think it's important to note that we'll once again find ourselves in a position of being short staff. Then Troy, you would have to put, unless we can get another contractor, and I think we've discussed that this is, this practice is happening less and less, then you would need to put an additional driver from your department on the road, and that would then take away from someone able to do parking lots, the school, fire, we helped assist with the fire department for us, the library, the senior center, town office building. You know, it's a concern, but I think Troy brought us that concern last year when he asked for an additional staff member in his budget in the Board of Finance. Cut their budget, so we had to then make a choice in spending between a staff member and new equipment, so.
Well, let's hope that it doesn't snow to the same extent that it's been raining this summer because we're going to be in a little bit, we're going to be in a world of hurt if that's the case.
Troy, I know last time we only received one bid, and you did go out to some of the folks that you, you know, have bid in the past and reached out to them in conversation. Is it something you're willing to do again?
Yeah.
Did that yield any results last year?
John, anything? I will call for a vote.
Liza?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Before we move on to the next item, especially for those on the call and in the room, I was not, we did not start the recording when the meeting started. However, we do have a taped recording, so we will try to put that together with the Zoom recording so that there is a recording of the meeting up until the point the Zoom call started recording. And by no means intentional. The next item is awarding the winter road sand two-year bid for 2021 to 2023. Again, in your packet, you have the results of the bid. You have copies of the bid sheets, and then Kelsey put them together in a spreadsheet for us. We had a bid from Becker Construction at $12.95 per ton delivered. Their delivery date would be as needed. Their comments were washed gray sand with sharp edges. Good for traction. The second bid was Desiato Sand and Gravel Corp. $21 per ton delivered. The delivery date was 24 hours from the time of order with zero comments. The third firm was Laquory. I think I said that, Laquory Sand and Gravel LLC, at $15 per ton delivered. No comments and no delivery date information. And the last bid was from Wyndham Materials for $15.50 per ton delivered. Again, no delivery date or comments noted. And Troy, your recommendation for winter sand bid would be? Troy's recommendation is to award to Becker Construction. That's certainly up to the board. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to award Becker Construction with the winter road sand bid for 2021 to 2023 in the amount of $12.95 per ton.
One second. Is there any discussion? Troy, overall, is there, you know, anything different? I mean, we've been talking about it for years. You have a discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for a vote.
John?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Liza? Aye.
That brings us to item C, Town Clerk Preservation Grants. All right. So it's the time of year when we get to the annual State Library Preservation Grants, which is in the amount of $5,500. And that goes through our town clerk's office. So I will make a motion to have discussion. I move to authorize Town Clerk Robin Campbell to be the designee for the State Historic Preservation Program Grant for fiscal year 2023. Second? The second, motion of the second. Robin, I see you here in the room.
Hello?
Hello. This is our typical grant. Do you, can you tell us a little bit about what you have planned for?
This year, actually, I had it in the works last year, but we failed to have it. I ended up switching it out at the last minute because I do know I was appointed in September of last year, and the grant was a pass, and I had no idea what to do. I'm sure I have a little better handle on things. I would like to use the funds to take the maps that we have in the vault and put down the images online. So currently, we have the land reporting post, which is passed, where you can look up land records online. It's the thing passed up for the map. We currently get at least 15 requests for maps to be emailed all week. So having the maps online, stuff with the land records, would help the end user out tremendously as well if they kind of opt in. Fourteen to fifty-five hundred dollars, which I should have about $200 left. I'm not sure. I don't know what I'm going to do with that. I think I might get some type of vital book. They are about $140. It's called Town Votes Meeting. Books are new. When I say they're used, somebody ordered them. There's no, like, anything described on them. So they're kind of like blank books. And we will write about a packet. So you might just get two books for that. It's good for the source. We'll use one for like trading or something. It's probably going to help that.
Does the grant carry over? Or is it used or losing?
Used.
Okay. Any questions? Comment?
Join?
We do. All right, seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
All right. Item D, Award Contract for Senior Center Air Conditioning Replacement. As you know, this was an item we asked for ARPA, Funds American Rescue Plan Act funds to, this would replace the four air conditioning units at the senior center and move them. So move them from their current location underneath the deck, closer onto a pad, closer to the door, the back door at the senior center. Currently, two of the existing units are not functioning. They've been limping along all summer on two units, and they attempted to be repaired. Were they repaired at least once prior to the summer?
Yeah.
I believe they were. And so the heat of the summer has certainly taken the toll on the two units that are left there. So we knew pretty early on that they needed to be replaced, but it's an extraordinary expense. As you can imagine, the senior center doesn't, you know, the senior would not be able to incur that cost. And we started looking for funding, and then the ARPA team came available for that. So I will make a motion to award the senior center AC replacement contract to M Core Services New England Mechanical in the amount of $29,650.
Second?
Second discussion. So this removes, removes all of the existing systems, moves them, relocates them. Does all of the wiring, duct transitions, refrigerate piping. The pad that has to be done, Troy, is that in addition to this?
Yeah.
Public Works is going to do that? Okay. M Core is our current, we currently contract them to maintain our systems. They, pretty early on when they went out to do their work on that senior center, had alerted us that there could be issues with them. And a lot of, Troy, you could probably speak to it better than I am if you've worked with them. It has to do with where they're located.
Yeah, they're located above the deck right now. And they're saying that the heat over the years, you know, when the heat, the hot air comes up, then it comes back down, and it's making the unit work perfectly what it should. So they should be moved outside where the heat rises.
I think it's really important that we have functioning air conditioning in there. Our seniors weren't utilizing the senior center for the majority of COVID up to this point. They started back in the senior center. I see several members of the senior center here in June. I believe when we opened, the doors here. And every time we had heat wave, we had a concern as to whether or not they would have a cool place to go. As far as cooling centers for the town, consistently alerting that the senior center is open for seniors for a cooling location. And if that had not been made available, we certainly would have concerns. And so this is a project that definitely, that will need.
How old is this system that's in there already? 16 years, I think. 16 years. It's done.
Yeah. And so that deck, and I wonder if it had been a higher deck, it would have been farther off the ground. It might have made. But again, I mean, it certainly worked for them for 16 years, but now it's not. And I'm hopeful that this will be done sooner, not later. I know earlier, maybe even a month or so ago, there had been some concern about mobility of items. And now it seems like if you need anything heating-wise, it came under for heating, and now air conditioning is less of a concern. So, and then they, M Core believes this is a project that can be completed. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
John?
John?
All right. Look forward to them moving forward with this. Troy, do you have any indication of when they think this might be able to be?
Once they get their permits, it should be.
A couple weeks? Okay. I mean, the tough part now is that we're ready for winter, but hopefully there will be no surf, spring. Next item on our agenda. I want to discuss the petition procedure. So as you all know, my office, we received a petition and called the town meeting. This board did. And when we corrected the first initial issue with the town meeting, it was a unanimous decision to call such town meeting. Last week, my office received a communication calling into question the legitimacy of the town meeting. After lengthy discussions and legal review, it was determined the petition could not move forward to town meeting and thus was canceled. The item, I sent back a copy of the petition and the item to the Board of Finance, whether or not they chose to take it up. It was not something the town, town meeting could handle or, no outcome could come of it. We could have, based on legal advice, held a public hearing to discuss, but there could have been no action as the item requires at least the recommendation of the Board of Finance in order to move that forward. So after all those discussions, which Robin, as a town clerk, we were part of last week, it brought into question the need or at least the need for a discussion of a procedure for petitions in the town. And so Robin, in our research, sort of taking a look at what some other towns do for their town meetings. Robin, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So yeah, when we received the petition the first Friday, September, it became clear that there was no written procedure in the folder other than just the petitions themselves. So we followed up the statute. All the statutes are there, they're very clear. 120, you know, 20 people can petition a town meeting. They have to be electors and more qualified to go in town meeting, which means that they were over $1,000 of corporate income. And the town meeting should be called within, shall be called.
Can you talk a little bit louder, Robin? I'm sorry, the folks behind you can't hear you.
The meeting should, shall be called within 21 days. But it's not clear as to, to not, what happens when petitions end. So Donna, our previous town clerk, two town clerks ago, probably had something that she knew what to do. But there was nothing in writing. I called like five towns to see what they do, and they're all different. Some towns pass charters, some have charters or pass ordinances where they have it spelled out so that the selectmen get it in and then they have seven days to determine whether or not the the call, the request to call a town meeting is legit or lawful or needed. Other towns just have it in writing. They just decided that the selectmen, oh, the selectmen will get it. For Ashford and the Comptess, the Town Clerk's office gets it. So I typed up this, what I kind of, I got to Stafford, I got this in my discussions. Basically, just a procedure. So everybody's clear, I guess, going forward, in the townspeople, so they know what, what happened, what would happen if they decided to force a petition for anything. There are different levels as well. There's the town meeting level. And then there is a referendum level, which would require two hundred people to petition, to push for the referendum. This particular town meeting that was just called did have come into play. It was the, of course, I need to rather, but it came with a reserve fund.
Yes.
And the reserve fund is protected by general statute.
Seven, seven dash three sixty-four.
Yeah. Four. So it's kind of like, basically, seven through sixty-four states that unless the Board of Finance has the last thing, you can't. So anyway, they started typing this. You know, I don't mind the town clerk's office receiving it as they always did. We can hurry up and get it to you guys, but it's just something to determine, to figure out what that statute is. Seven dash six, I think, would, you know, basically, you're required to warn the town meeting on twenty inhabitants. There's no duty to warn a meeting pursuant to such petition unless the board is reasonably certain that the object of the petition is lawful, proper, and not frivolous. So, you know, that, when you have twenty-one days to get the thing in, check the signatures, which is not that hard. I, you know, that's.
Depending on the number of signatures.
Yeah, if you have two hundred people, that might take a little time between the but you still have, you have to warn the meeting, you have to, you have to call the town, the special Board of Selectmen meeting to call the town meeting, and then you have to publish it in the paper. So it's some, and something where you have to determine whether it's lawful, that, that's not a lot of time.
So, so from the the research you did, so right, so some towns have it in their charter?
Yeah.
And it's spelled out in the same way others. I think you said, was it Stafford who has it go? The petition is taken from the town clerk's office, because that's where the official form would be. They write their own question. They're responsible for the question, the petitioner. And then it's turned into the selectman's office where they have seven days. And one would assume in those seven days, that's where you're determining whether or not it's.
I don't think Stafford has the seven days. I think Hebron has the seven days.
And then, and then they, in turn, that office turns it into the town clerk. And once you receive, once you receive it, verify signatures, the clock starts ticking on the twenty-one days. And the twenty-one days is to hold the meeting.
Yes. The meeting has to be held.
So one of my biggest questions is, is this something that would require a policy, a general policy, an ordinance? I think we'd want to have discussions about whether or not we change that, because right now we have no policy. So Robin gave the petition out and she receives it and the clock starts when she received the petition. And so this allows it to slow down. I can tell you at this last town meeting, the twentieth, we had twenty-one days would have been the twenty-four.
Yes.
And our town clerks weren't going to be here in some of those days, thus backing up the, the time in which we could have the town meeting where the town clerks are the recorders of the meeting. So there are different circumstances that can shorten that process. It's very rare that the town clerks wouldn't be in their office. They happen to have a conference
Yeah.
later this week. But listening how some other towns have a process by which they build in before it's received, time to those checks and balances, I think would be worth a discussion for us. But I'm curious as to whether or not, without a charter, in the absence of a charter, how that policy would be.
I mean, and it could be mine. I can totally, I, I have this thing that I, you know, and yeah, this completed petition versus submitted to the town. We can keep it the way it is. It's just that I, since enough, I.
So it can be that informal as that's
Yeah.
just the general policy. It doesn't have to be something more formal.
Yeah. And then, you know, once we get it to you, you would send it. I think the other factor in A, me not knowing what to do a hundred percent. But it was a Friday before a long weekend, so then you lost a day with the Monday being that holiday. So, yeah. But, John?
Just in the interest of saving time, if you had two hundred signatures, would you be able to verify twenty of those signatures and then pass it over to the first selectman and verify the rest?
Not if it were for a referendum.
Well, for a referendum, I understand.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, this particular, I only had sixty signatures. I was like, oh, no, it really didn't, it didn't take that long.
But would you want to discount the rest of the signatures on, once you get twenty, just kind of stop?
No, no. I think what he means is, once you get to twenty, like, okay, this is legit. At least get you guys going on it. And then we.
Except what I'm hearing some other towns do is they, you don't, the town clerk in that town doesn't, it doesn't get turned into the town clerk. It gets turned into the selectman's office and then they have a set period of time, which is set by the town?
Yeah.
Determined by the town, like Hebron is in their charter. They have seven days.
Yes. Hebron does. Stafford, I don't think do. I think they just basically.
Whatever time it takes.
Yeah. But I, I'm sure they fall into that twenty-one days as well. And by no means do I mean, mean to sound like I'm juggling a half tomato, as I was. So I will, you know, I'm happy to keep it. And that is a great idea, Donna, to put the twenty signatures and stuff, and we get it going. We don't have that many.
And the other question is on verifying if the Board of Selectmen turns it down because it's frivolous or illegal or something, is there going to be a avenue of appeal on that? Especially the frivolous thing is what worries me.
Right.
I can remember only one time. I can only remember one time when a petition was denied for being frivolous. And in that case, sorry, I remember correctly, it was frivolous. But I cannot see other times when you might have the urgency over the issue and what would happen then.
Pretty subjective, right? So frivolous is subjective.
I would recommend that's when the town attorney should be involved. I mean, that's.
I would like to see part of our processes that any and all go through at least that vetting process. To start, I think it's beneficial. Look, if we learn, if we don't learn something from this, right, then we're missing out on a piece, but slowing down, not intentionally slowing down the process, but correctly.
When we did it for the last meeting, did you run that before the town attorney before?
No. Did not. The legal review team after.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm happy to keep it the way it is. I just, I just thought it should be at least true. And that, the previous town clerk had probably her method of, you know, how she did things up here. And I didn't have anything to go by. And it's weird, because the statutes, like I said, are very clear. You know, twenty people can push a town meeting to the selectmen, have to hold, how was the twenty-one days? But like, okay, who receives it? Where does it go? What? How do you determine if it, you know, I mean, yeah, it is clear now that I.
I think that's where the statutes leave the rest of it up to individual municipalities to determine what is right for them or for that town.
Yeah. So, you know, the other thing too was, when they came in, they said, well, this was approved at the town meeting, and I bet it would come out a nicer, like, not that I wouldn't even have, no, their fund is protected by, you know, but.
But your role is to
Give the form.
Give the form, petition, not to
Right. And I guess.
determine a question.
I guess to also determine whether or not, you know, yes or no, yes or no, would fit, but not like, you know, they say, should Bozo the clown be willing to pack that? Sure, that sounds legit, you know, to put out to people. But, yeah, it's not the town clerk's role to determine whether or not it's unfrivolous or lawful or needed.
I think that's the piece that, that's, that's the step that needs to be built in, because it's on conversations we've had about previous petitions. It was under the understanding that a petition was binding for the selectmen.
And I did too.
Okay. So, so if we have that mutual misunderstanding, what a petition that gets the required signatures and gets put in front of us does, then we are not going to be working with the accurate information. And I very passionately supported moving this forward because I was working with that understanding. And so at the very least, we A, need to build in the step for legal review. And B, need to make sure that the legal review that we're getting is from somebody whose content area expertise is in this topic. Because I have been frustrated with some of the questions that we're getting, or some of the answers that we're getting from our questions who later turning out to be different. So, so I think there's a really important step here. Because none of the three of us are lawyers and it is super easy for any of us to read something and not be clear about what the legal jargon really means. The word frivolous is a perfect example, super subjective. And what is, you know, what does that mean in terms of petition? Is it like, you know, the example that you gave? Like, we need to figure out how we can make sure that we're all working with the correct legal information.
Well, and that was, every single town was, well, did you contact the town attorney? No, but because, you know, it wasn't as thought that it would need. But that would be the selectmen, just to be clear, that in everybody, everybody has stated that the selectmen are the ones, because the selectmen and the attorney are the ones that have the legal.
And there's certainly, we put this to our town attorney and whether or not we move forward based on that advice. And if that advice is correct, and that will make us look at where we move forward with our attorney. I tell you, it took multiple conversations in this discussion last week for final determination. So that certainly gives me pause. But I would, I would be interested in seeing a policy from your office developed alongside the selectman's office. I don't want to see us take any action on anything tonight, but put something together so we can have further discussion about it. Would you agree? In favor of that? Yes. Okay. All right, Robin, I think. All right, that brings us to item, call of a town meeting. While this may seem similar, this is a completely different question that was on the petition, same content overall. I will move, Town of Wellington Notice and Warning, Special Town Meeting. The electors of the Town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in town meeting. Face masks required at Hall Memorial School, one eleven River Road, Wellington at seven PM on Tuesday, October fifth, twenty twenty-one, for the following purpose. Item one, to see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Finance will authorize the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from the reserve fund to project number zero four dash four zero four one for school building committee consultants as previously approved by voters at the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two annual town meeting. The funds will be utilized to hire consultants to assist the school building committee, SBC, with the review of multiple options, including but not limited to renovation, addition, or new school, and any other items needed to assist the SBC in fulfilling the charge of the SBC committee. Dated at Wellington, this twentieth day of September, twenty twenty-one, Wellington Board of Selectmen. Is there a second?
Second?
Discussion. So the question went before the Board of Finance on Thursday. On the board of, I shared our petition. I'm not sure what, whether it was the petition I shared with them or a communication from the school building committee that put this on their agenda. Regardless, they took action and voted this question to move this board, to ask this board to call a town meeting. Therefore, meeting that requirement of town need, of recommendation of Board of Finance and a town meeting. So those two things are required in order to actually utilize the fund. Any other discussion?
This is exactly the Board of Finance order, right?
That is correct. It was long and lengthy. All right. Any other questions? Comments? Discussion. Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
John?
Hi.
Erica?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Item nine, old business. We had no old business carried forward. Unless other of you have some you'd like to add? Seeing none, bring us two presidents to speak. Again, you have the opportunity to speak. If you would identify yourself for the record and limit yourselves to two minutes. I'm gonna, once again, start with those in the room, just to keep things a little bit organized. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to the phone. Yes, Mr. Peter. You should be unmuted.
Hi, am I unmuted?
You are, sir.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Peter Litencich, ninety-seven, ninety-seven Trask Road. The comment on the petition for town meeting that you just approved, and I want to thank Liza for her commentary on it. I completely agree. The selectman acted in good faith to move forward with the petition for the town meeting. And it's something we've always done as a town, and I was pleased to see it happen. I am glad also that Liza pointed out that, I mean, we now understand, this part troubled me. I was all for the town meeting, but I did not agree that the Board of Finance should be circumvented. That's always been their role to approve the release of projects because there are financial actions that should have their approval, and it makes sense to have their approval before we go to town meeting. So I guess we got to the same place, but in a roundabout manner. But I'm glad that we did so and that we're following the process we normally follow. I'd like to add also that I am disappointed tonight to see a member of the Board of Selectmen treated rudely and with disrespect merely for asking questions about the agenda. I get it. Everyone's busy and tired and so forth, but there is no reason for that. And I'd appreciate it if we maintained decorum at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak on the Zoom? In the room? It's changing my reason here. Is there anyone on the Zoom has it to speak? All right, seeing none, I will move forward to good and welfare. I'm going to start with reiterating for those, I don't know who came on later in the meeting. I heard lots of chimes. The beginning of the meeting inadvertently, the recording was not started on the Zoom. There is in fact a recording happening in the room. So we will put those two together to make the audio available with the rest, the remainder of the video. So I think it's important to note that. And if anyone here in the room would like us to go back through the items that we started with, I could do so, but it did, you know, we did take them, we did take action and there was a recording. So I will mention, we have our August, we're now in October. We have our August monthly report from Troop C. There were three hundred and ninety eight calls for service, six accidents, six criminal investigations, zero burglaries, one larceny, and two hundred and forty six non-reportable matters and six arrests for motor vehicle enforcement. We had a hundred and thirty three traffic stops, one DUI, one arrest, two misdemeanor summons, sixty one infractions, thirty one written warnings, and twenty six verbal warnings. We thank them for keeping us up to date on that. I will also mention that our finance office, once again this year, qualified for the G F O A, that's the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That is an accomplishment for our very hardworking finance office. So my hats off to our business manager, Donna Lotenics, and her staff and to our treasurer, Lori Semperban. We should be receiving, they no longer give us a new plaque, but a medallion for our plaque. When that comes in, we will formally present that and probably do that at a board of finance meeting. So thank you to them for all of their hard work. I once again remind you, Mobile Food Chair will be here at the town office building next Wednesday, the twenty ninth, from eleven to eleven thirty. That is open to anyone resident or not. And it's still, at least at this point, I believe, a drive-through model. If you can, please support our small businesses and restaurants. They certainly need all of the help that if we're able, we can give them. John or Liza, anything for good and welfare? Nothing. I'd like to welcome, formally welcome Kelsey Aller. Kelsey began last Monday in our office, new administrative assistant. And while today is her first official meeting of the board of selectmen taking minutes, she did pin chip for the board of finance last Thursday when they didn't have anyone available. So she's already, you guys see an old packet typing. So thank you and welcome Kelsey. Seeing no other business before us, I will move to adjourn at seven twenty three. Is there a second? Second of my job. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, now we can stop the recording.